All right, everyone. Folks are getting settled in. Thanks for giving us a minute to get some technology figured out there. And I'm going to go ahead and call the April 8th City Council Meeting to order. 6:07 PM. Exactly. Sometimes, even my voice that's loud, sometimes I needed a gavel. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. We'll go ahead and start our meeting. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. And we'll go ahead and note for the roll call that we have all 12 councilors in attendance this evening with Councillor Becerra, Councillor Vasika and Councillor Farmer online. Look around here and make sure I'm accurate there. All right. Great. And Ms. Trimble, with no other concerns, will go ahead and move on.
Go right ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. We do not have any approval of minutes this evening, so we'll jump to Agenda Item Number 3, which is to announce any changes to committee meeting agendas and committee membership approvals. So the committee schedule for April 10th, 2024, is posted online. Does anybody have any changes they wish to share with Ms. Trimble? Or Ms. Trimble, do you have any committee changes to share with the public?
I am aware of a committee change, and I am happy to share it personally rather than having a committee or a council person do it. We had one item that is not going to be heard in the first committee meeting on Wednesday, and so that committee meeting will begin at 10:15 instead of 10 o'clock, which is what you guys have in your paper copies. The online copy has already been updated.
Okay. Great. So it looks like our Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will start at 10:15 AM?
Yes, and they will only be hearing one item and not two.
Okay. And that one item they'll be hearing is the Northside Pedestrian Bridge renovation change order?
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Do we have a Parks person that can confirm that?
Let's see. I'm looking around the room. I don't see any Parks people here, but I'm going to look to our Chair. And any idea? Not sure? Okay. All right. Well, we will make sure that that is posted online for clarification for any members of the public. The Climate Conservation and Parks Committee, however, still will be meeting on the... That's correct? Northside? Okay. Great. Thank you, Councillor Nugent. And so just for clarification, we won't be hearing the Silver Park Sculpture Walk Agreement. And my apologies, I heard that earlier too. Thank you for that. That jogged my memory. Thank you. Great. All right. Any other changes, Ms. Trimble?
That's the only one.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to then Item Number 4, which is Special Presentations and Proclamations. We do have a proclamation this evening, and it is a joint proclamation with the Missoula County and City of Missoula. And so I'll go ahead and read that now. Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, which guarantees fair housing for all residents of the United States, was signed into law in April 1968. And whereas the month of April is nationally recognized as Fair Housing Month and a time to reflect on and reaffirm our national commitment to the right that fair housing opportunity is available to everyone in the United States without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, and disability. And whereas, Missoula County and the City of Missoula recognize this legislation, endeavors to ensure all our residents are free to purchase, rent, finance, and insure their homes without regard to their sex, marital status, race, creed, religion, color, age, familial status, physical or mental disability, or national origin. And whereas, Missoula County and the City of Missoula welcomes this opportunity to celebrate the 55th anniversary of the adoption of the Fair Housing Act and to rededicate our commitment to the principle of fair housing for all by strengthening efforts that address discrimination in our communities, supporting programs that will educate the public concerning their rights to equal housing opportunity, and assuring every person their right to live free of fear of housing discrimination. Now, therefore, we, the Missoula County Commissioners in the state of Montana and the Mayor of the City of Missoula, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month. We encourage all citizens to recognize this celebration for the purpose of improving the quality of life for all residents. Thank you. All right. And I did not mention, but I do not believe we have any neighborhood council updates from leadership team, but I just want to make sure there are no leadership team members here from any of our city council updates. All right. Okay. Well, our meeting this evening is fairly straightforward. Agenda items. We have one public hearing. We've got items on the consent agenda and nothing under new business and no regular business to cover. So we'll go ahead and jump into our public hearings. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and mayor invite community comment. City Council will hold its public hearing this evening unless for a reason it is required to be carried over for final consideration. And so tonight, we have Item 5.1, which is the Montana Avenue and California Street Right-of-Way Vacation. And we will start with a staff report from Mark Todorovic. And did I pronounce your name correct?
Yeah, it's pretty close. Todorovic.
Todorovic. Thank you. Mr. Todorovic, we are ready whenever you are.
Okay. Good evening, Mark Todorovic, Surface Project Coordinator, Public Works and Mobility. Today, I'll be presenting the proposed Montana Avenue and California Street Right-of-Way Vacation. Right-of-Way Vacation is located at Montana Avenue and California Street Northwest Corner. This is a petition request from Doug Hawes Davis and Eva Dunn Frobig to vacate public right-of-way at 1200 Montana Street, Lot A of the amended plot of Eddie Edition Block 7, Lots A and B. There is a settlement agreement and mutual release between Doug Hawes Davis and Eva Dunn Frobig, property owners in the city of Missoula. The property owners agree to release any and all claims they may currently have against the city. The settlement agreement provides increased density and dedicates new housing. Comprehensive details of previous discussions leading to the right-of-way vacation request are explicitly outlined in the settlement agreement. The vacation request is a direct outcome of stipulations set forth in the settlement agreement. There is a condition of approval that requires a temporary public right-of-way easement for nine feet of vacated California Street right-of-way. If the conditions are not met within five years of execution of the settlement agreement, the temporary easement will become permanent. The right-of-way vacation is depleted in bold lines as 10.5 feet adjacent to Montana Avenue and nine feet adjacent to North California Street. The right-of-way vacation total area is 2,138 square feet. This request for a right-of-way vacation not only holds a potential for additional housing units, but also assures that it will not impede the proposed infrastructure developments on adjacent streets. The proposed right-of-way vacation could allow four new housing units on the parcel and two additional existing single-family units. The total unit count planned would be six units on four saleable properties. Here is a site layout plan that shows Lot A and the right-of-way vacation area. This site plan shows two existing buildings on Lot A. This conceptual site plan shows new and existing buildings and proposed lots. The boundary line relocation has not been applied for or approved. The SEA boundary line relocation is not occurring with the vacation and review of the new proposed units is also not occurring with the vacation. The conceptual site plan doesn't depict future infrastructure improvements to be designed and constructed within the remaining California Street right-of-way. This future California Street conceptual site plan shows the new curb and boulevard sidewalk adjacent to 1200 Montana Street. The site plan shows no parking allowed on California Street adjacent to 1200 Montana Street if this right-of-way vacation is approved by city council. It is the applicant's intention to assist in increasing opportunity in Missoula for housing to meet the current high housing demand. The proposed vacation will provide up to six additional units. The applicant will have to apply for an SEA boundary line relocation and review for zoning compliance. This will need to occur prior to any further development on the parcel. City Council will have the option of including a condition of approval that requires a temporary public right-of-way easement for nine feet of vacated California Street right-of-way. If the conditions are not met within five years of execution of the settlement agreement, the temporary easement will become permanent. We recommend that you adopt a resolution to vacate the public right-of-way. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Todorovic. And now I'll offer the opportunity for the developer or the sponsor. And so Craig, I didn't get your last name, so Mr. Craig, come on up to the microphone. Please say and spell your last name, please. Thank you.
Craig Schaefer, 406 Engineering, S.C.H.A.E.F.F.E.R. And we've enlisted the help of my personal assistant here today, Dale, over in the corner, to help with my... with our slideshow. Hoping to be very brief here, just kind of fill in some of the gaps that may have happened since the last time this issue was at city council. We covered most of this at committee, so I'll hopefully breeze through this and go to the second slide, please. Just a quick itemized sort of schedule. Applicants have been at this for about two and a half years, closely coming on to three now. From the beginning, on and off, all parties on the block have been working together to come up with a solution, an overall plan for the whole block. At one point, the applicant had approached council or had approached staff, I guess, never made it to council with the idea of vacating the alley. And in concert with some other development on the block, that request never came to fruition, never made it to council. So in May of last year, that caused our clients to go back to the drawing board, try to come up with a plan where they could add some additional development to their property with the space that they had. At that point, we attended a DRT meeting last fall, I believe, last summer, and presented this plan to staff, at which point it had some general support. Following that meeting, then ensued a four-month period where the applicants met with city staff and developed this set of conditions and criteria in the settlement agreement that was finalized on November 7th. So that then led us on this path to council here tonight. Next slide, please. In the background, as these slides go, are some of the building styles that the applicants have employed on the property that they do own in the neighborhood there. Proposing up to four single-family owner-occupied affordable units, six units total. That includes two smaller ADUs. The existing units are already constructed, two units on a single ownership. So we're hoping for this project to move forward to effectively separate those and make them individually saleable units. The units that are there are net metered, so they have lower utility costs. One of the units is 100% electric. And with this unique... with this unique situation here, the two existing units, we could create the parcels around them, and they could be ready for sale in 2024 yet relatively quickly. The two units have a possibility of rental income, low maintenance, green building methods, low waste. Applicants have told me when they built these existing units, there was... or when they built this existing unit that you see on the slideshow here, there was not a single trip to the dump. In that settlement agreement, with this vacation, the owners release any legal claims they might have to the alley, which is a long story that we can unfold or would rather not unfold. I think it's in the settlement agreement. The properties, as proposed, with the development will comply with the growth policy and the master plan. And it represents all owners on the block working together. There's been... On the next slide. We slide forward to the general conditions here. What did I forget on the last one? Focusing on the single-family aspect of it. So on this slide, in those conditions of approval, there's a condition for the city to retain the easement on California Street with those three conditions that Mr. Todorovic mentioned in his presentation. And it's included as part of the resolution that's on your desk tonight. The sole purpose of this condition is to guarantee the benefits, which we've taken to mean that the development will actually happen on the property. And really, the point we're trying to make on this slide, I think, is that with the two and a half years that the applicants have put into this and over $50,000 in fees and services in pursuit of the development of this property, they're pretty darn serious about developing this thing. So... And the rezone application has been submitted as well in January, which I understood went to DRT meeting last week. So hopefully, that shows up here on your desks here relatively quickly as well. So with all that being done, the applicants would like to not have this additional condition attached to the vacation tonight. So they request that the city council consider approving the vacation without the recommended condition of approval as well. The applicants here tonight, the applicants' representatives, myself and Natalie here are here to answer any questions if councils should have any. Thanks. Sorry, I forgot to smile for most of that.
I don't know how that turned off. Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there any council questions this evening for the staff or for the developer? Councillor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I guess I would just like the staff to speak to the applicant's request about the last statement he made about the condition and why it's important.
Looks like City Attorney Sudbury has raised his hand. And so, please, Mr. Sudbury.
Yeah. Happy to speak to that. From my perspective, and we got into this a bit at the city council committee meeting, we adopted these conditions as a method to ensure that this development happens because the development and the addition of additional housing units was that essentially the public benefit is being obtained by the vacation of this right-of-way. And while I appreciate that they have spent a lot of money and are appear committed to completing the project, I think for the public to have its interests fully protected, these conditions need to be attached to the vacation. If something happens with a material change in circumstances that lead the owners now to not develop their property as they said they would, and then we, the city, doesn't get the additional housing units that we were anticipating from this property, then essentially, there would be very little, if any, public benefit associated with the vacation. So in my mind, this is critical. This was part of the settlement agreement. This was language that the property owners agreed to in the settlement agreement. So I think it's appropriate to enforce as part of the settlement agreement as well as part of the public benefit.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Not seeing any here in the room. Any questions online from council members? Okay. Not seeing any additional questions. Then we'll go ahead and entertain the main motion, and then we'll open it up for public comment. So I will look to Land Use and Planning Chair, Mr. Nugent, for that motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I move a resolution closing and vacating the northerly 10 and 1/2 feet of Montana Avenue and the westerly 9 feet of California Street lying adjacent to Lot A of the amended plot of Eddie Edition Blocks 7, Lots A and B, as more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comment, and I'll start with folks in the room. So offering anybody to come on up and speak on this agenda item. And as a reminder, please introduce yourself by saying your name and spelling your last name. And then, just as a reminder, we keep our public comments to three minutes, and I'll keep track for you.
Thank you. My name's Natalie Black. Last name is B.L.A.C.K. I am attorneys for the applicants. And I just wanted to take a second and just on the point of this conditional easement that applicants are requesting today, that we don't need to have this temporary easement in here. Just a couple of points off of Mr. Sudbury, his comments that he made today, which we're fully in agreement with. We did work on the settlement agreement together. And one thing I want to point out for you is that it does say in our negotiated settlement agreement that the city council may require the public easement, but it is not a requirement of our settlement agreement. That is a decision that's up to your discretion. So it's not a requirement of our settlement agreement that this easement has to be on here. The second thing is to say that there is other public benefits that Mr. Sudbury didn't mention that was a part of negotiating the settlement agreement, which are claims that the applicants have agreed to not pursue against the city with issues with their deeds. So leading from the extensive history that we do not need to get into today, but I just also want to point out that there is other public benefits of agreeing to settle other claims that the applicants had in agreeing to this settlement.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Black.
Thank you.
You bet. Any others in the room this evening? Okay. Not seeing any. How about online? Are there any public comments on this agenda item online? Not seeing any. Okay. All right then. So we've... Technically, I opened the public hearing with public comment. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing since we have heard from the public and turn it back over to council comments or additional questions. Any... Yes. Councillor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just clarification. So the proposed language to the recommended motion is inclusive of the conditions that the city attorney mentioned?
Correct. Thank you for that clarification question. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Not seeing any. Then that go ahead and concludes the parliamentary debate, and we will move to a vote. So Ms. Trimble, if you'll do a roll call vote, please.
Voting on Item 5.1, the right-of-way vacation on Montana and California, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlinho.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Alson.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika?
Yes.
And that passes with 12 in favor and none opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Well, that concludes that item. I want to thank the applicants and representatives for coming down this evening. And we will now move on to our next agenda item. As mentioned, we do not have any new business this evening. And so we'll move on to public comment on items on the agenda, which include consent agenda and regular business. And so items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on NCAP will know what is on the consent agenda. And then we'll invite community comment on these items before the council votes. So Ms. Trimble, if you will read aloud the consent agenda items, please.
Beginning with a motion to approve accounts payable or claims for checks dated April 9, 2024 in the amount of $891,146.41. We have a motion that constitutes a first reading and preliminary adoption to set a public hearing on April 22, 2024 and preliminarily adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 1114 Coppler Street, legally described as Lots 11 through 14 in Block 133 of Woody Edition, located in Section 22, Township 13, North Range, 19 West PMM from R 5.4 Residential/Blossoms Bed and Breakfast Plan Unit Development, PUD overlay, to R 5.4 Residential, and refer this item to the Land Use and Planning Committee for a presentation on April 10. We have another motion that constitutes a first reading and preliminary adoption to set a public hearing on April 22, 2024 to preliminarily adopt an ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 15.32, Section 15.32.010, Missoula's municipal code entitled Building Permits Generally, to repeal the section of Title 15.32.010E and H requiring persons applying for a building or demolition permit to provide proof applying for a building or demolition permit to provide proof that a trained asbestos inspector has surveyed the areas of the building affected by the proposed repair, alteration, renovation, remodel, demolition, lifting, burning, or moving before a building permit can be issued, and remove Title 15.32.010H. The building inspector shall not issue a building or demolition permit as set out in this section to direct repair, alter, renovate, remodel, demolish, lift, burn, or move any building unless an asbestos survey has been conducted on the areas of the building affected by the proposed repair, alteration, renovation, remodel, demolition, lifting, burning, or moving, and adding reference to Montana Code annotated. Moving on, we have a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Lynn Davis to the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board as a regular member for a term beginning immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2025. We have a motion to pass the resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Missoula, Montana to reimburse certain original expenditures related to the purchase of capital equipment from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued by the city after the payment of such original expenditures. We have a motion to approve the resolution related to the financing of proposed water system improvements or water main replacement project, establishing compliance with the reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. And a motion to adopt the resolution relating to up to $5,784,000 of water system revenue bonds, D N R C Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Program, or S R F bonds, consisting of $1,190,000 Series 2024 A Bond, $993,000 Series 202024 E Bond, $1,173,000 Series 2024 C Bond, and $1,148,000 Series 2024 D Bond, $1,280,000 Series 2024 E Bond, authorizing the issuance and fixing the terms and conditions thereof. We have a motion to approve a resolution and authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement with Hellgate Broler Derby at 1835 North Avenue. A motion to approve the contract that is pending legal review and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Jacobs Engineering to develop the water and wastewater utility facility plans at a cost not to exceed $638,859. We have a motion moving for the reappointment of Ann Iverson to the Open Space Advisory Board, also known as GOSEC, as a regular member, city resident, for a new term beginning immediately and ending on January 25th, 2027, and placing this nomination on the next consent agenda. I guess this is the next consent agenda, so I'm creating that now. And finally, a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal land use agreement between the University of Montana and City of Missoula aligning and cooperatively implementing mobility and stormwater management goals.
All right, thank you, Ms. Trimble. Are there any council members that wish to separate any of the consent agenda items this evening? Okay. Not seeing any, then go ahead and open up the consent agenda to public comment. Are there any folks here in the audience that wish to speak on the consent agenda this evening? Okay, not seeing anybody in the room? Anybody online wishing to provide public comment on the consent agenda? Or any of the minutes in the regular business? Okay. Not seeing any, then we can go ahead and take a voice vote on the consent agenda. Ms. Trimble.
Voting on the consent agenda, Items 8.1 through 8.11. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed? Please say nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no regular business items, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment on non-agenda items, opening it up to folks in the room. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items this evening? All right, not seeing any here in the room. How about online? Well, okay, not seeing any online. Then we'll go ahead and conclude our public comment on non-agenda items, and that moves us on to Item Number 11, which is communications from the mayor. I just have a quick appreciation to mention for our local ski area, Montana Snowball. Montana Snowball has a lot of character, and I'm a big fan myself, and I just wish to say that it was a miraculous year how we started this winter with very little snow and snowpack in the area. Several ski areas in this region really suffered, and Montana Snowball really seemed to be able to get creative and figure out a way to make sure folks in the area maintained the ability to get up there and ski. We had a lot of snow this last weekend, and that is something that might be to the chagrin of many. The oceanic phenomenon known as El Niño seems to be coming to a conclusion, and La Niña might actually be here for a visit, which may mean good things for us in terms of clear air in this coming season. So I say let's keep that winter time or that mountain snowpack, and just wanted to share my appreciation for another great ski season. Thank you. All right, so I'll go ahead and pass it on to general comments of City Council members, and I'll start on my left side this time. Counselor Carlino.
I just wanted to echo the invitation that we got from the Unhoused Neighbors Union and Montana Women Vote to go to Free Cycles at 6:30 on Wednesday to talk to people who are experiencing homelessness in our community and to help inform our decisions for the Urban Camping Working Group. So I think we all have it in our email, but just wanted to echo that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Campbell.
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Jones, pass. All right, moving on to Counselor Jordan.
I'll pass, thanks.
Okay, you bet. Counselor Nugent?
Thanks, Mayor Davis. I just want to give a shout out to the nurses of St. Patrick's Hospital. I saw that they were successful in their negotiations, and I would just thank Providence for working with them, and I appreciate all the hard work that the nurses at St. Pat's and everywhere do, and I appreciate that they are going to continue working with no interruption.
Yeah. Great, great news. Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Davis. Just a quick shout out to our Senator John Tester, who recently secured $3 million to replace the 57-year-old bridge in my neighborhood, the Lolo Street Bridge, connecting Duncan over to Rattlesnake Avenue. It's one of the essential crossings in the valley, and that bridge has been in dire need of being replaced. The funding comes from the Protecting Resilient Operations for Transformative, Effective, and Cost-Savings Transportation Discretionary Grant Program, which is called the PROTECT Fund, and that is a component of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that John Tester was the only delegate from Montana to vote for. So big shout out to Senator Tester. Thanks for fixing our bridge.
Hey, congrats. Counselor Cheryl? Okay, thank you. Counselor Savage?
Yes, also a shout out to Senator Tester. Thank you so much. Ward 1 really appreciates you and all of us who have inadvertently hit that sidewalk while trying to make that curve on Lolo. It'll make Lolo so much safer, and there are actually like school bus stops across Lolo, and I'm super psyched that we'll get a bridge and we'll get some lines on that street, and it'll be much safer for kids. And I also just wanted to say a shout out to my alma mater, the University of South Carolina, for winning the NCAA Women's Basketball Championship yesterday. It was so fun to watch, and I got all these videos of my old college roommate's children who are now in college who were dancing in the fountain in front of the Thomas Cooper Library yesterday, so...
Good times. Counselor Anderson?
I'll pass, thanks.
Okay, you bet. All right, I'll go ahead and just shift over to folks online. Counselor Basara?
I'll pass, thank you.
You bet. And Counselor Farmer?
I can also pass, thanks.
All righty, you bet. And Counselor Vasika?
I'll pass as well, thank you.
All right, you bet. Thanks for being online tonight. Well, folks, that pretty much brings us to the end of our City Council meeting, and I will go ahead and adjourn the April 8th, 2024 meeting at 6:44 PM. Thank you very much.